Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mr. Valero.
Here.
Mr. Mandala.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. Seeing none. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody's looking all fancy for picture day. Very nice. We all seem a little coordinated in our blues and grays.
As good as it gets.
Exactly, very nice.
Don't you worry, it's about feeling things coordinated.
Nice. That. So we have a new member here at our table, Alyssa, who is our student representative, so welcome. We'll try to make it as fun and as quick as possible.
Sorry, sorry.
Absolutely. So I'm just gonna go in order of the committee reports, okay? Alrighty, does anybody have any updates?
We have an action-packed policy update that Mr. Featherman will walk us through, and that's all I have for that.
We can't wait.
We really can.
I attended South End Schools FSA, and it was great. They have a really lot going on. This year, the FSA has its South End's big fundraiser that they're planning on doing, and they're going to be doing a casino night. So there'll be more details coming out as they go along, but that's their big thing. They're also having the Wizards at the high school. I forget the date, it's a big deal, it always sells out. So the Wizards are gonna be there, they're doing a clothing drive, the candle sale. It was really a great meeting. We actually had an opportunity to really kinda talk about everything that was going on and what they wanted to do. I also brought up all Mr. Featherman's superintendent's coffee talks, and so, and made sure, reiterated to all of them that they're welcome to come to any coffee talk that's at any of the buildings. And so, the big thing is, like I said, their big fundraiser is going to be this year. That's, it's their chance, and they're gonna do a casino night.
I like casino night.
Yeah. And then we, you know, we both attended the open houses, I don't wanna steal your thunder, the open houses at the high school and the open houses at the middle school.
Yeah, that was just last week, wasn't it?
Yes, it was, yes.
Yeah, no, both were really well done. The middle school one in particular, Mr. Decourt tried to mix it up a little bit with a little bit of technology, and featured some short videos on the students, talking about different aspects of the school, which I think was a great addition and a nice way to mix it up. And Mr. Mangilli was informative as usual, and it was very nice, so, yes.
Yes.
I attended the middle school FSA meeting, which was yesterday. They're doing, obviously, because South End has a big fundraiser, one of their smaller ones is the 50-50 fundraiser, and so they have, they have their raffle tickets, and they'll be sending updates as far as what the total amount is. And on November 22nd, Mr. Decourt will be picking the winning ticket. One thing that was discussed was how the schools can get additional revenue by linking, like apparent linking their Target card to the school. And we talked about last night that, you know, each school, North End, South End, Middle School, High School, I guess has their own program affiliated with Target. So we did talk about maybe you might wanna send out a "Did You Know?", 'cause it doesn't cost anything, and just by assigning your card to a school. So I think Mr. Decourt was gonna ask you about that.
Because what, by linking the card, they give Target?
Yeah, you give some kind of amount for the amount that you spend, and, yeah, so, and yeah, all you have to, you don't have to do anything other than, from what I understand, is just link your card initially, and that's it. Let's see. Mr. Decourt talked about performance matters, which is always exciting, and he talked about how, you know, to meet the needs of the students and finding ways to differentiate instruction. And I asked if it was, you know, mandatory yet, 'cause I thought that was pretty exciting, the presentation that we saw at the first day for the teachers, and so he went into a little more detail about how students can have differentiated learning based on the scores and stuff, so I thought that was great. He mentioned that, of course, MMS is future-ready, and that's very exciting. The Week of Respect is this week. Today was Pyjama Day. I've no idea what tomorrow is. School Violence Awareness Week is the week of October 16th. So normally during the Week of Respect, they do a video, entire school thing, so this year they decided they've done that for a number of years, so instead of doing that, they were gonna have all the kids work on posters during School Violence Awareness Week, and the theme is how to keep MMS safe. And that's however the kids want to interpret that. So the kids are gonna work on that in their social studies class, and they're gonna hang the posters in the cafeteria. One thing that's actually, I mean, it was all interesting, but one thing I thought was really interesting was in November, they're having a screening, it's called Screenagers, and it's gonna be at the high school, and they're inviting middle school and high school parents. And it's all about, you know, screen time and like what it does, and, you know, just, I think it's, you know, I joked that it's probably a public shaming, 'cause I think we're all guilty of too much screen time for our kids, so, but I think it's awesome to try to come up with either techniques or tools to use to kinda limit that and the effects, and so I think it's great that both high school and the middle school are doing that together. Picture Day is Friday, the book fair is the week of the 16th, and Treps will be here before you know it. Treps is March 18th, so start thinking about that. Fifth grade kickoff for that is Feb- February, gosh, November 13th. So yeah, always a fun time. And that was the middle school.
Oh, then I was gonna say, the one thing is, Mrs. DiMaggio also talked extensively about how South End is, has future, future-ready status.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so she was very excited about that. And one of the parents had brought up with that, we're gonna start working on the other two schools.
Yeah, I had actually mentioned that last night, 'cause I didn't want anybody to think that only two out of the four got it or anything like that. It's just it was such an exhaustive process that we did two at a time, and then the next focus is obviously the other two schools.
Correct.
So yeah, absolutely.
Right.
And I think that was it as far as the goings-on for the last two weeks. So now we are going to have our student representative, Alyssa Johnson, is going to give us an update on the happenings at the high school. Welcome.
So, high school so far, we've only been a month in, so we don't have many updates, but we have done the 9/11 Cedar Grove Waves already, and that was a great success, and we had a nice ceremony for that. I think it kinda brought the community together, as well as it being on TV, so gave Cedar Grove a big one night. We also did the opening tailgate barbecue, and we'd like to thank the CGA and the Board of Education for helping us and joining their time. And then, oh, actually, if we had this a meeting like a week later, we're having our Student Council meeting tomorrow, where we, all the officers stay for the whole day, and we discuss all of our events for the year and everything we're gonna do. One main thing that we're looking forward to this year is a school dance. We didn't do that last year, but we're excited to bring it back this year. So as of tomorrow, we're gonna discuss everything, we're gonna have a monthly plan like we do every year, and hopefully we're gonna get along.
That's great. And by the way, you did a really great job at the 9/11 ceremony.
Thank you.
So you really did.
It was, it was, it was really amazing, because I know that, being involved in it, obviously, but having, you know, I know you came back to school, and, you know, it's Wednesday, and Mr. Mangilli's telling you have a speech ready by Monday, and so that's a big deal, especially for somebody who didn't live through it or really doesn't know it, so I would have to tell you, you were just amazing, I said it before, you were just amazing with your speech, and I think there's 18 students that, that, you know, they were, that were selected also to read, we were just really very dignified and tasteful. Thank you very much.
And now I'm gonna let you go, 'cause you have school tomorrow, so don't worry. Feel free to go, have a lovely evening, and we will see you next month.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Absolutely. Actually, and just a follow-up for the whole Waves thing, I just wanna thank Mr. Shoner again for all of his efforts. I mean, you really outdid yourself, you know, I mean, you do every year, but, you know, every year you add a little bit more, and I think it was just really great and extremely respectful at the same time, and I think the town really appreciates what you do, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
What are you planning for next year?
You know, we're probably gonna, you know, it's all about having, keeping the formal ceremony and, and just staying with that, and maybe have the kids a little bit more involved somehow. One of the things we wanna do also is that the setting up of it is a little bit more tedious process, 'cause the kids aren't in school yet, and so there's several dads in town and moms who, their companies, they have to do a day of volunteer, a day of volunteer, and so they're going to request the day of volunteer to be the two weeks before, so they can actually help set up the, set up the installation.
That's great.
So we're gonna like tweak that up a little bit, a little bit more, so that it's building that volunteer aspect of it.
Excellent.
And getting the kids involved.
It'll be good to have additional help.
Yes, yes, 'cause Mr. Valero and Jack, and also Mrs. Dai and Ellie.
We're still working on solutions.
We're, we're, yeah, we're, it was, you know, everyone helps, and you, yes, it's a lot of work, but it's, we're gratifying and just not forgetting.
Yeah, so thanks to everybody that's gonna come out, that'll be awesome.
Yeah, it will be, I think, yes.
Very nice. Absolutely. Any other updates? Moving on. All right, tonight we have two board presentations. The first one, I'm just gonna go in order as it's written here, is the High School Music Spring Trip. Ms. Justin, I believe, is gonna present on that one. Have you posted?
Yeah, it's technology.
Okay, good evening. Okay. I'm here tonight to present the annual spring trip, music trip, and it is slated for the choir, the orchestra, and the jazz band, proposing the dates of April 20th through the 22nd. And which button, Joe?
Oh, the large, the large button.
Okay. Okay, so, the place, of course, Boston, Massachusetts, someplace closer than we usually go, a short three-day trip, and these are the places that we're excited about going to. Everything from the marketplaces, Quincy Market, to Boston Doctor, the Spirit of Boston Dinner Cruise, the Freedom Trail, that's our first day out, and then our adjudicated performances for the three different groups, the Boston Museum of Science. I'm very excited about the musical performance element, 'cause it's always great, of course, to get adjudicated and have clinics with the clinicians, but then to go see a professional performance of the Boston Symphony, you can't beat that, on one of the evenings, is awesome. And then on the way home, Six Flags. So we're leaving Friday, if that's okay with the Board of Ed, April 20th, and then coming home Sunday the 22nd. The goals for the trip, I'm gonna have to turn and look a little bit. Number one, our adjudication. We prepare, rehearse for a long period of time in the spring, well, actually, starting in January, and the adjudicators, while we're performing, write down and also speak comments, and then provide us with the MP3s or a flash drive, and then trophies for every ensemble. And we'll have the opportunity also to see other high school groups perform. Attending a musical performance, like I mentioned, and then I listed the pieces that are slated for that Saturday evening performance, a Benjamin Britten Symphony, Mendelssohn, and a Chopin Piano Concerto. History and fun, and also, I can't leave out the Boston Science Museum, but there's a lot of history in the city of Boston, and the Freedom Trail, the Boston Doctor includes a lot of history and fun. Going to the markets, the Dinner Cruise and Six Flags are great incentives for the kids also, and they, at the end of the year when we talk about what we wanna do the following year, they always mention the trip and how they enjoy bonding, becoming a community together, and having fun between DC and the music trip, and there's several crossovers. There are festivals open every weekend, starting like the first weekend in April, and up until right before that May date, and running Annapolis, Maryland, Boston, Chicago, Nashville, and this one, Performing Arts Consultants runs a very prestigious music festival. Yeah, so a lot of high schools will be attending that weekend, but they'll be performing, you know, some on Friday morning, some Saturday morning. Yep.
So this year you're not doing the joint? Don't you usually do one?
Okay, so every two years we do that Bennington-Vermont, Vermont trip, yeah. Yeah, that's with my best friend running Vermont, yeah.
You switched, you did the Beatles.
Yeah, we did the Beatles, we did Les Mis, did Hairspray. Yeah, 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 yeah. And try to every once in a while incorporate a flight trip, but we're staying close to home this time.
So the adjudication process, is that at an ensemble level, or is that an individual assessment?
It, okay, so, we are judged by a criteria on an ensemble level. So there's like mixed choir, Class A, one, it has to do with the size of your school and how many members you have in your group as well. And, and what's great is the clinician afterwards, well, there'll be three of, three or four of them, and then one of them goes up and works for the kids. Will introduce a warm-up that they think will help improve a certain section, or just, just run a piece of the music with them after giving some of their suggestions.
Wow, very good. Very nice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, our next presentation will be the 2018 Cheerleading Trip to the National Tournament in Texas. Good evening. Good evening, how are you? Good, how are you?
Everyone, might wanna lower that, or no? There you go.
Thank you for having us this evening. I stand here before you guys this evening to explore the opportunity of your approval for the high school cheerleading team to attend the NCA Junior/Senior High School National Championship located in Dallas, Texas. This is the most prestigious high school nationals that there is, and we are really excited about it, because if we get approved, we will be the third team representing New Jersey there. A lot of the teams are from the South, so there is one or two high schools, and then hopefully us representing, so we can all kind of, you know, be together. The trip would be from January 25th, it's a Thursday, returning on Monday, January 29th. They will be attending school on Thursday, it would be after hours. The flight, the tentative flight information would be departing Thursday evening at 6:00 PM and landing in Dallas, Texas at 9:19. We would have set up transportation to have the girls complete a full day of school and leave here around 3 o'clock to get, give us ample time to get to the airport and get them settled, so that we aren't rushing. They would be practicing on Friday in Texas at the Convention Center, which is the Crissler Bailey Convention Center, where the arena will already be set up for the competition, so it'll give the athletes the opportunity to see the arena, where they're competing, you know, kinda let them get the jitters out of the way, almost. So they will be practicing there on Friday. We are scheduled a practice time by the company once we register and everything is approved. So right now I don't have a definite time, but as it gets closer, all of the exact information can be sent over to you. It is a two-day competition, so they will be competing Saturday and Sunday, and returning on Monday. So they will be competing in the medium-intermediate division. Coach Lasky and myself have decided that this is an amazing opportunity, that we would love to have the girls experience, it's, you know, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, it's something different than what they're used to. We think that they are ready for this type of challenge. We also think it's important for them to bond and, you know, continue to grow that camaraderie as a team, along with, you know, seeing all the other competitions besides the local competitions here in New Jersey, exploring all that talent, and, you know, being able to compete out there with the rest of them. This event is strictly, will be paid by the cheerleaders, and we've been fundraising since August, so we, you know, it would be strictly paid through by them. You know, these girls have been practicing since August, and they have been training four days a week, and on their day off, they do tumble and stunt at a local gym, so they really are putting in the time and the effort, and this year, actually at camp, they did qualify for the event. So you do have to qualify for this event, yes. So we did have camp, they met all the requirements, and we, we got the bid, so once we hopefully get approved, we can go ahead and start that process, 'cause it is a lengthy process to just even register them, but they did qualify this year for the first time in a long time, so that we're really excited about that. The chaperones will be myself and Coach Lasky, along with the 16 athletes on the team, will be attending this trip. So we will be solely responsible for them the entire weekend, from the second we leave Cedar Grove to the second we touch down in Dallas, you know, we will be together as a group. We will be staying at the, upon approval, we will be staying at the Hilton Garden Inn in Dallas. We will have, they have shuttles that will take the athletes and ourselves from the hotel to the competition, so we don't have to worry about setting up transportation. They have shuttle buses that run back and forth that are totally just for the competition, so we don't have to worry about paying extra for, you know, to rent a car or anything like that, or a bus. So they pretty much have everything kind of in one package, so we really just need to get them there, and everything else from then on with our, with us will be taken care of, pretty much. Does anybody have any questions?
See, you've never done this one before.
We haven't, they usually attend a marriage here in Florida, but the dates are usually very, they're later in March, so we're out of season. Last year, we were up in the air with Nationals, and I figured this year, they are at the elite level, let's try something different, and let's really, you know, challenge them. You know, they need a challenge, and, and like we explain to them every time, you know, there's, there's things beyond these local competitions, you are ready for that challenge, and I think it's important to expose them as a team and with, you know, with us as coaches to represent Cedar Grove along with New Jersey at the most prestigious high school competition that there is.
Is there gonna be any media coverage?
Yes, there is gonna be media coverage. You do have to pay for it, but there will be coverage, live coverage.
ESPN?
Yes, it is recorded on ESPN, but that's shown after the fact, but if you purchase the live coverage, you can watch it like, you know, like while you're at home. So that was a question that a lot of people had, and because you do, it is, you know, it is pricey to travel, so a lot of the, you know, the questions were, can, you know, parents or friends and family watch it? And they absolutely can watch everything from, you know, start to finish. So we're really excited about it, we're hoping that this gets approved. The girls have been practicing very, very hard since August, day in and day out. Our goal is, you know, to get there as a team, and, you know, they're doing a really, really, really good job. We have a great, great group of athletes this year, really strong, strong team. We're really excited.
And you had to qualify.
And we had to qualify.
You just, you just, you just.
No.
You just can't go.
We just can't go.
Right, yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
And, and we, I didn't really know what the, coming into it, we, they've always done NCA camp, this was the first time that we had let them know, we're really interested in going to Nationals, and they said, well, you have to qualify. And I said, well, what do we have to do? Like, you know, we're off all summer, and then we get, you know, they tried out, they made the team, but then we get these group of girls, and we kind of have four or five days to practice, is it like something, do we have to work on any specific skills? And it's a lot of leadership, sportsmanship, they did have to do, you know, some, you know, some stunting, some tumbling, but they really were really motivated, I think, you know, being off all summer, excited for camp, they really pulled through, and we got the bid on the last day, which was really, really exciting, and, really exciting, thank you.
That's great.
Does anybody have any questions? Nope. Anybody else?
No, I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it for board presentations. No, I'm good, I think we're good. Thank you, have a good evening.
Yes, thanks. Thank you, ladies.
All right, moving on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion, under minutes, sorry, can I have a motion for B1 through B3?
So moved. Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of September 18th, 2017. B2 is a motion to rescind Resolution B2 from the August 2, 2017 board meeting and reapprove the treasurer's report for the month of June, 2017. And B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Business, can I have a motion for B4 and B5?
So moved. Second.
B4 is a motion to approve the purchase of a water heater for Cedar Grove High School at the price indicated, and B5 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with CMS Productions and the Cedar Grove Board of Education for another television commercial on October 3rd for a fee listed therein. Any discussion?
They just, they wrapped, literally wrapped.
Like two seconds ago?
Two seconds ago, yes, they were at the high school shooting it, yes, filming.
Great. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through, there's a lot of S's. S21, wow.
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from October 3rd, 2017. S2 is a motion to recognize the following proclamation. Do I need to read that, or not necessarily, 'cause it's not? Okay. S3 is a motion to retroactively approve the resignation of Maria Guimano, paraprofessional as of October 2nd, 2017. S4 is a motion to approve Penali Chesky. Okay. Memorial Middle School Paraprofessional at the rate listed. S5 is a motion to accept the resignation of Meldudi Moranti, South End Grade 4 maternity leave replacement teacher. S6 is a motion to retroactively approve Katie Hamlin, athletic trainer to teach CPR at the rate listed. S7 is a motion to approve Nancy Leotaskis to provide supplemental instruction at the rate listed for the 17-18 school year. S8 is a motion to approve Maria Pellegrino and Francine Lambroschino to provide supplemental instruction before and after school at the rate listed for the 17-18 school year. S9 is a motion to approve the following staff to serve as pathways instructors for the 17-18 school year at the rate listed therein. S10 is a motion to approve Christopher Kinney as the ESEA Title I Coordinator in the, for the amount listed for the 17-18 year. S11 is a motion to extend Christine Karabatos, South End kindergarten teacher maternity leave replacement. S12 is a motion to approve longevity for Stacy Kaye for starting her 18th year of service, retroactive to September. S13 is a motion to amend step and salary for Maggie Stroh, North End music teacher. S14 is a motion to retroactively approve Nick Franacea, Assistant IT employee at the rate listed therein. S15 is a motion to approve Laura Sax, North End Morning Care, the curriculum rate listed for the 17-18 school year. S16 is a motion to approve the following salary degree advances. S17 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. S18 is a motion to approve the following school volunteers. S19 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events, that's a lot of events. S20 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. And S21 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Any discussion?
That was a mouthful.
That was a lot.
Sheesh.
Should've paused. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes to everything except for S19, I abstain from voting for myself.
Mr. Shoner.
Yes, aye to everything except for S19, I'm abstaining from voting on myself.
Mr. Valero.
Aye to everything except S19, where I will abstain from voting for myself.
Mr. Mandala.
I, I'm aye to everything.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, except for S19, in which I abstain from voting for myself. That was a lot. Moving on. All right, under Policies and Regulations.
Under Policies and Regulations, I believe Mr. Featherson is going to read some policies and regulations to us.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Dai. Special thank you to the Policy Committee. We met on September fourteenth to revise several policy and regulations and abolish one regulation as well. Policy twenty-seven hundred, Services to Non-Public School Students, has been revised to incorporate revisions to code regarding services provided to non-public schools, in this case, St. Catherine's. There is nothing new in the code and guide that requires any new or additional responsibilities for us. And where the services outlined in this policy guide must be provided, making this a mandated policy for us. Policy fifty-seven fifty-six, Transgender Students, this is a revision. This policy guide revision incorporates language to protect a child should there exist reason to believe disclosure to the parent of the transition process could lead to emotional or physical harm. Seventy-one hundred, Long Range Facilities Planning. These policy and regulation guides have been revised to be consistent with code regarding long-range facilities plans. The regulation guide has been updated to provide more detailed guidance regarding long-range facilities plans. Seventy-one oh one, these policy and regulation guides have been revised to align with revisions in code. Comprehensive guidance is provided in the Reg Guide regarding the process for a school district to receive approval for capital projects. State agency and/or department names have been updated. And an additional section for capital projects not subject to educational adequacy review has been added. Seventy-one oh two, these new policy and regulation guides have been developed to align with code for the approval of the acquisition of land or approval for acquisition of existing facilities. The existing policy guide was very detailed and read like a regulation guide rather than a policy guide. Therefore, the language was updated to be more comprehensive in order to align with the new administrative code. Seventy-one thirty, these, this policy guide rather has been updated, providing more detailed information on the assurances a school district must provide to the New Jersey Department of Education and Essex Executive County Superintendent to receive approval to close a school. We hope we never have to go there. Seventy-three hundred, this policy guide has been revised to incorporate minor revisions in the administrative code over the past several years. It has several minor revisions, mostly importantly, most importantly rather, providing clarifications of a district procedure to dispose of scrap or waste school district personal property after there are no bids for the property. Regulation seventy-three zero one point one, pardon me, Regulation seven-three zero zero point one, this one was abolished. Regulation seven-three zero zero point two, this regulation guide has been revised to incorporate revisions in the administrative code. State agency names have been updated. Additional details on the procedures to be used to dispose of property have been included. Regulation seventy-three zero zero point three, this regulation guide has been revised to incorporate revisions in the administrative code, including procedures for disposing of textbooks as required by code, a district procedure to dispose of scrap or waste school district personal property, and requiring board approval for the sale of any personal property at private sale after a public sale. Regulation seven-three zero zero point four, this regulation guide has been revised to incorporate revisions in the federal requirements to dispose of per, of property purchased, it's a lot of Ps there, folks, with federal funds and used in federal programs. That'll be all, thank you.
Very nice. I'd ask you if you could say that five times.
I told you it was action. You didn't believe me.
Exactly. Nice.
I like this, short and sweet.
All right. Can I have a motion for S twenty-two? Under Policies and Regulations, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
S twenty-two is a motion to approve the first reading of the policies, updates, uh, and revisions that Mr. Featherson just read. Any discussion?
Nope.
Thank you to the Policy Committee for meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandela.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Sure. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Members of the board, thank you for hearing me this evening. I'm here today to give you an update on the continuous issues. Oh.
Even though we know who you are.
We know who you are, but they have to do it.
Uh, Teresa Cordero, twenty-four Brunswick Road.
Thank you.
Um, I'm here today to give you an update on the continuous issues that are still going on with the FSA at Memorial Middle School. Just there's, just so there's no question, my intentions have always been what is best for the kids and what is fair for the parents that also participate in making the FSA successful. The mention that I want to take something from our kids is absurd. I promise you, if this board moves on, there are five people that would gladly step in. Everyone's replaceable. As mentioned in my previous engagement with you, I had followed the respective ballot process in April of two thousand seventeen for a position on the FSA board and was rejected by the President Maria Adabato with the reason that she wanted to keep her current board intact. Later, she disclosed to others that I also did not meet all the criteria, chairing a committee. Keeping in mind that the President appoints chairs and I was not given that opportunity. However, I did attend five consecutive meetings, which is also part of the criteria. There was not another person who, that attended that many meetings or met that criteria. You can reference the newly published bylaws, which showed up under the forms on the MMS FSA website. And you could see the bylaws that were published late in the summer. It is also important to note that the Vice President resigned at the last meeting in June, early June. Fast forward to the first meeting of the new school year, this Monday night, October second, not going unnoticed, there are two new board members on that dais. At the end of the meeting, I asked to be heard and asked Maria Adabato to please explain, uh, expand on the process that was followed to select the new board members on the FSA board. She said she selected them and contacted them over the summer and asked them to be on the board's two empty seats. I said that they did not meet the criteria in the bylaws and she said they chaired committees last year. I said that that may be true, but they also, but they did not also attend three consecutive meetings as stated in the bylaws. Nor did they apply in April during the application process period to be on the board for this year. It's not an and, I mean, it's not an or, it's an and. You have to do both, three consecutive meetings and you also have to chair something. With that said, I said, these are your bylaws, so how are you following just some of the rules and not all of them? The way I see it is we're all on equal, equal playing ground at this point, where they met some criteria and I met some criteria. But it did not go through, but they didn't go through the extra step with the application process. They showed no interest in April of last year. And you're well aware, and I asked them, you're well aware that I had interests, but still did not give me the opportunity. At that point, Stephanie Mizinski derailed the discussion and started speaking over Maria Adabato and debating with me the fact that I mentioned it was their bylaws and how they didn't write them. I tried to say to her that they are their bylaws and they are the basis of how they operate. In addition, with five years on the board, you're able to make iterations every two years. She wanted to project her aggression, push my buttons while continuing to debate about their relevant issue of who wrote the bylaws and was belligerent when I was trying to get back to the issue of the board's selection process. She then gave me a bogus excuse that they were not sure that they were going to replace the VP position until after June thirtieth, the end of the term. Then, over the summer, the Recording Secretary also resigned. Keeping in mind the installation of officers according to the bylaws should happen by June thirtieth. I again proceeded to say, but they did not meet all the criteria and met only as much as I did. Why was I not given the opportunity? I stated that they cannot give me a good reason and the writing is on the wall. It's a personal, it is personal and it was a bully move in my eyes. Stephanie continued her rant so much that Mr. Decourt, who was trying to defuse the situation, could not get a word in when I was being chastised by this FSA member. Mr. Decourt, who graciously worked in an unbiased manner with both sides last year to bring harmony, but to also bring fairness and understanding the rules and bylaws in play. He reminded us that we are here for the kids and everyone should be afforded the same opportunity. I clearly was not. Mrs. Dai then interjected and said that this was not the place for this conversation and we should have it outside of the FSA meeting. I asked, is that the board's position? And she, in a scolding manner, said, Teresa, you will not interrupt me. You gave Mr. Decourt the opportunity to speak and you will afford me the same. Like I was a child and she had some authority there. I was more perplexed that, one, why she was saying anything, since her position there as a representative of the Board of Education not get involved in the FSA business, which the Board of Ed previously made it clear that they had zero involvement in the FSA. And, two, the other reason I was perplexed is, when is there a better time to discuss the FSA business than the FSA meeting? Are we expected to fight this out over social media? Mrs. Dai's interference is a misuse of power and undermines my rights to keep my dignity, dignity at this meeting when everyone there had a personal agenda against me. Then, Mrs. Dai says to the board, end the meeting, with a cut it off at the throat, end the meeting, while rolling her eyes, and while I was speaking, and while I was speaking. And then the meeting adjourns, according to Mrs. Dai's direction. I was dismissed and not allowed to continue. And then Mrs. Mizinski came to my table and continued her intimidation and belligerence towards me directly, spewing absurdities about the bylaws after the meeting was adjourned. As I was leaving, I said to Mrs. Dai, as I passed by her, that I thought the Board of Ed was neutral in this and she screamed in front of everyone that I was a coward and if I had anything to say to her, I should confront her directly. I decided to leave, since no one in that room was interested in working things out, but more interested in asserting their power and bringing me down while skirting the facts that I had prepared. So I ask you this, where do we draw the line? When is it enough? How much more of this unfair treatment and not following of the rules is needed to see what is happening in your school? Is the Board of Ed involved in fair treatment of its parents or not? Does the Board of Ed President get to close an FSA meeting and insert herself in FSA business and be confrontational in the process, clearly siding with the FSA and not with me, a parent? Maria Adabato is president of two FSAs this year, one in the middle school, one at the high school. Is there not enough room to step aside and let someone else have an opportunity? And lastly, how in the world is this a teaching moment for our kids when the bullying behavior is starting with the parents? Any questions?
No. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Well, does anyone have any?
Can anybody answer my questions? My questions?
I think as we've stated before in consulting with our attorney, the board plays no role in, in the administering of the, the FSA. Is that true, Mr. Featherson? And we have no oversight over them?
Then why would you adjourn the meeting, an FSA meeting, when you had no oversight there?
I'm gonna agree to disagree with you that that's not what happened.
You did this?
I did not.
And you told them to adjourn? They adjourned.
I'm sorry, I am going to disagree with your version of the story.
Can you tell me your version of the story?
No, I'm not going to because I'm not gonna engage this here. The board, as I said, does not have any oversight of it.
Well, I believe you do when you made yourself involved last night.
No. And I'm not gonna comment on it any further. People who were there last night know that that's not exactly what happened.
They were your friends, your people, and you engaged with them and cut the meeting off. And I had no, this was my opportunity to speak at that meeting and you cut the meeting off. Who are you to do that? You have no oversight, you just said that.
Thank you.
I'd like to, any, any other board members have any questions?
Honestly, I don't have any questions. I mean, this is something that I think, um, again, as stated before, I don't really know. We do have to consult with our attorneys. We're not part of the FSA. FSA is a completely separate, each individual FSA is a separate entity. They support the kids.
I understand a hundred percent.
So where we step in is really beyond me and we will have the discussion.
But it's not beyond your president here to step in.
Unfortunately, ma'am, I wasn't there last night.
I know, but she was. And there were other people that were there.
But again, we will have this discussion again and.
Mr. Decourt was there? I'm sure he would speak to it, but it was unfair and not your place to cut off the FSA meeting or adjourn the meeting. It was not your place. You have to know your place. Your, your, your assumption of your power does not go into the FSA meeting.
Thank you. I'm well aware of my powers, the Board of Ed President.
I don't think you're aware of your power when it comes to you're just supposed to be a representative there at the meeting and not interfere. I had valid points. I questioned some of the integrity of those board members on the FSA and the, the, the things that are happening, which were blatant, I just read them all to you, they're very unfair. They're very unfair. I'm asking that this, that board be removed and not be allowed to practice inside the school walls.
And we don't have that oversight.
You're, oh. You can stop dismissing me, I'm not finished speaking. I have the floor. I'm allowed to speak for as long as I'd like. Uh, the board, the, the lawyer can also decide what needs to be done. But to me, to advocate for this type of behavior in the school that we represent is wrong. It's wrong on so many levels. How do we teach our kids to not follow rules? Is that okay with any of you? I don't understand how no one has even a comment about it. I don't understand. Is there another place or platform that we can have this discussion?
It's not a question, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, it's unfortunate, we, I, I hear everything you're saying. And based on the, again, I didn't read the bylaws, I don't know the bylaws. But based on the information that you're providing, if that is the bylaws, it's disappointing that that is happening. Unfortunately, we can't, we don't have any.
But the authority you do have is to not allow it to happen in your schools. We don't have that, I pay taxes for that school. If that type of misuse and mishandling of a policy, a guideline is being, I would be fired at work if I did something like that. If I just decided I was gonna pick one but not another. You know, it's, it's, it's not right, it's not ethical, it's not fair. And that, to me, that move that they did with picking two other people over the summer, that's a bully move. That's a bully move.
Did you ask a question of?
I just said my very first question was.
No, no, no. Last night's meeting, did you get a chance to ask why? Cause like I said, my whole thing is just transparency. That's what we work on as a board here. Is there any reason why they didn't have an election last night?
No.
Or bring it up for discussion last night?
No.
Did you ask that question?
I didn't get a chance to. The meeting was adjourned. It was on my list of questions, if you'd like to see that, it was on my list of questions. When were they, when were they brought into the board? When was the election? Technically, I'm the only voting member because I'm the only member in good standing from last year because I was the only one to attend it three consecutive meetings. Therefore, I'm the only one that has voting rights. Me and the board. I, they had no, I was never asked, ever asked. So I can't even, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time with the way I would go about asking these questions last night, not being able to get the answers because Mrs. Dai, your board president, cut off the meeting and her friends on the dais agreed. And she didn't yell at them belligerently, she yelled at me belligerently. So that's telling and that's, that's not fair. And that's it.
To answer your question as far as practicing within these school walls, there's only so much power that we as the board have as well.
I know.
So it would be like us telling the Recreation Department that they can't use our fields.
But they don't have anything, Recreation is directly involved with the school. They are not.
It, it's, for lack of word, in my opinion, it's a gray line between what we can and cannot do. So for us to tell somebody, no, you can't come into our school and with everything that they have done in the past.
Then don't let them solicit to the parents anymore.
Unfortunately, as I said before, FSA is a completely separate entity.
Okay, well then go with that premise and then decide what happens within the four walls of the school. That would be my take.
Well, if I may, you know, I, Mrs. Cordero, I appreciate your coming here tonight and presenting your position and your side and, and the details. I would recommend to the board that we look into this matter. You know, you've brought to light, you know, many details that I, I don't know, I can't speak for anybody else. I was not aware of. So we've gotta look at this, you know. We appreciate the, the suggestions you're making, but I think at this point, we need to, to, to do our own investigation into what was said and, and, and talk to Maria Adabato and, and Mr. Decourt and, and come up with a reasonable response to what we have here.
The thing I do ask for, within your own control, is that your Board of Ed member or representative is there, is just there to, to present board business and not get involved in the discussion that's going on with the FSA. involved in the discussion that's going on with the FSA.
Yeah, I, I think that's generally the under, the understood position that the board rep takes at, at the FSA meetings. Whether or not, in, in your, your opinion, that took place last night is, is another story, but I, you know, having been to many of these FSA and APT meetings, that the position of the board is to provide an update and to.
Absolutely.
And calling me a coward as I'm leaving?
No, no.
All of that, that didn't happen either, Mrs. Dai?
That's not.
You need to be accountable for your actions, like anybody else's, like anybody else's. You need to be accountable.
Thank you.
Because what you did was wrong as a representative of this Board of Education. You should act in a professional manner and you weren't there as a Board of Ed representative last night.